Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the October Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag? Okay, thank you all for coming. First on the agenda is any public comment on the agenda items? If so, please state your name.
My name's Don White. I'd like to speak for a minute about the Butter Creek Development. It's on the agenda for tonight. I think West Rock Hill is due to maybe change their policy a bit on multiple-use driveways for homes. We have an example, recent example now on Ridge Valley Road where a new housing, small housing development went in. And there's now seven driveways on a couple hundred-foot section of the road. I think it looks terrible myself. I think it just plain looks stupid. And I don't even think those driveways are wide enough for a firecrack to get into those properties. I don't think a firecrack could get in there. And I think that is, you know, pretty bad planning. We have, I mean, we have multiple driveways all over this township. They are not causing us any problems. If I asked you to fix my 1,100-foot driveway, you would say no. And that's all you have to say to people who have multiple-use driveways. No, we can't do anything for you. You're on your own. There is no problem here. There's no problem. There's never been a problem. When developers put in roads, which apparently we like, then we pave to maintain the road. We plow the road for snow. We clean the ditches. We mow the weeds and we repave when the road gets bad. We're actually better off having private driveways. They don't cost us anything. There's no cost to the community for a private driveway. You are presently forcing the Butter Creek builder to put in four driveways. It will also look stupid. Using these socialist zoning tactics to stop fellow Americans who are just trying to build a home is just wrong. You have held up the Butter Creek builder for decades. Please stop. For the record, I have no connection to that builder. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, any other public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on. Announcements, we will be holding an executive session tonight to discuss personnel and some real estate matters. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. The September 17th, 2025 meeting minutes, the wind plan review status, action plans about to expire, emergency services report, building and zoning, services, public works, the Mylars for Signature, Moira Romeo. And Greg, I'll ask you to read the Treasury report, please.
Sure, the Treasury's report as of September 30th, 2025. The general fund, $2,089,579.01. Highway aid, $262,189.97. Open space, $1,600,918.11. Park fund, $74,503.24. Equipment fund, $34,081.41. Highway capital, 149.13. Street light, $41,460.91. General fund reserve, $522,276.79. Open space manor field, $41,436.27. Sewerage maintenance fund, $221,831.6. Stormwater fund, $1,560.46. And the escrow funds, $1,2,495.15.
Okay, any comments or questions concerned regarding the Treasury report?
I have none on my commotion to approve.
I have one, and that is pointing out the general fund. That will be half of that after we pay our paving bill.
Correct.
Right? So as it says, two million now, it'll be just a little over a million when we get done paying for our paving for this year when it's completed.
In 2024.
Yes.
Because it was two years they did not pay in 2024.
Correct.
It'll be down to 1.3.
It'll be down to 1.3 million. We will not have 2 million, okay? Just wanted to make that clarification so everybody understood that. Okay, that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Yep. Okay, motion is made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just have it. All right, next on the confirmed appointments. Mr. Nyman, Penridge Community Senior Center, annual report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. Opportunity to just give you a little update of, I think you've gotten copies of our report and a copy of the budget. Okay, so just some highlights. We're a full-service center. We have a paid manager and a paid assistant manager. Those are the only two paid personnel at the senior center. Everyone else is a volunteer. Our building now is, everybody thinks it's new, but it's approaching 20 years old. And as a result, the normal maintenance and upkeep are starting to catch up to us. For example, we've had to replace the commercial stove in our kitchen this past year, which will probably be paid into this year's coming year's budget. We've had to replace the grease trap in the kitchen, major expenditure. We've replaced the heat pump and the heating system. In the legacy room, we have very nice decorative beams, which we've had to repair because we had some cracking take place. So these are the types of things that we're starting to deal with from a maintenance standpoint. We have areas for billiards, arts and crafts, conference room, new game room in the basement. We have a library, an office for the manager, and a gift shop. We have a community room, which we call the legacy room, which I'll refer to more. Our building is climate-controlled with a generator, handicapped accessible, and we are open for extended hours during bad weather as the county asks us to do that. Some of the programs that we provide, we have health screenings, tax preparation, insurance counseling. We provide subsidized lunch programs, including in-house lunches and meals on wheels. We have educational programs and forums. I think Hal presented one of those programs for us, and thank you for that. We have computer education programs. We have activities such as chair volleyball, art, billiards, ceramics, tai chi, book club, card games, line dancing, and table tennis. We have a nutrition program. We also have a very important AARP driving program, which allows seniors to get discounts on your insurance. The center is the only facility in the Penridge area that provides for the recreational needs of those 55 and over. We function on a fiscal year, July 1st to June 30th, the same as the county. As I mentioned, our manager assistants are the only people that we get any funding from. We do get funding from the county, probably from the state through the county for their salaries. But we do supplement them somewhat from the center also. Our income sources include donations, fundraisers, grants, the legacy room rentals, which is used for bridal showers, baby showers, birthday parties. The importance of the legacy room is about 45% of our revenue is raised by being able to rent out that room. We have generous contribution from each of our Penridge municipalities, and we thank you for that. All of our operation expenses and mortgage money are raised locally. We have an $860-plus monthly mortgage. As I said, all of our operational expenses and this year's budget is $262,000 are raised locally. If you've had a chance to look at our budget, you're going to see that we're functioning at this point in time at $140,000 deficit. But I guess as chairman of the advisory board, that's my job to find that money somehow, so we'll work on that. We are a member of one of four senior centers in Bucks County, members of the Bucks County Association of Senior Citizens. That association actually owns our building. That has, we have paid the mortgage and upkeep on that building for over the years, but now we're starting to look at the direction that we need to go to at this point in time from a financial standpoint. We do have a separate foundation, which is part of our center called the Penridge Senior Center Foundation. It's a 501(c)(3), and it is funded with donations from retirees who have made grants. We have one retiree who was very much involved in the founding of our center, Nancy Keenan from Perkacy. We get $20,000 a year from her foundation. We have another gentleman who recently made another $20,000 a year. So those are some of the funds that we're able to use for programming and for outreach. Those grants do have guidelines. We can only use them for certain things. So just so you're aware, basically of where our money comes from and where it goes to. Some activity highlights, we do blood drives. We, every year, the Bucks County has senior games. The card games and billiards are played at our center for the county games. We have lunchtime presentations, entertainment funded by the Keenan Fund. We have increased website visits. We have special programs. We have Real ID and Septa Day, soup and sandwich luncheons. We do have several shredding events during the year, and basically we look for donations. Those are free, but we look for donations when people come to there. And we have trips. If you look at our budget, you'll notice that from trips, we take in about $58,000 a year, but we spend $54,000. Many of the things that we do in the center are not to make money, to provide activities for our seniors.
Five minutes are up.
Two minutes.
You got two minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. Some of the planned activities we have, chair volleyball, pottery, knitting, fun with math, science. Let's Talk, Let's Talk became an interesting activity in the last two years where some of our senior gentlemen who have lost their spouses just have an opportunity to come to the library, sit down, spend some time, and just chat with each other. It's become very active and very well-attended, and we've taken advantage of that opportunity. Again, we exist to provide services to our senior population. We thank you for your continued support, not only financially, but if we go for a grant, I know we can expect a letter of support. I know that you guys put stuff up on your website to promote our events and things. So those all help us financially, but also to get the word out to our seniors. So our membership, I didn't mention, we have over 660 members. Our attendance is over 2,000 members, or 2,000 people a month, and that's an increase over last year. But again, thank you financially and for your assistance otherwise. That's really why I wouldn't come here tonight, to say thank you.
I have two questions for you.
Go ahead.
Number one, how can people rent the hall or the room that is rented? How do they go about?
Just stop in at the center, talk with the manager.
Okay.
The center manager takes care of all that.
The second thing is, this is not just for seniors. This is a community center where other people could use it as well, that are not seniors.
Not only, not only is it not just for seniors, it's not just for members. A state, because we get state funding and because we get funding, any senior is allowed to come into our center, use our center. We do have varying fees for activities, whether you're a member or not. But we do not restrict using the center to, you know, being membership.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, David, I have a question.
Sure.
You talked about the 20-year upgrades. Do you see anything that is of concern as far as the building's concerned going into the future?
Not specifically. We're concerned about the fire suppression system. We had to have that tested periodically, and the tests, we passed it this time, but we're worried. And that's a multi-thousand-dollar replacement if we have to do that.
Right.
The building, as I said, is 20 years old. Roofing is going to become an issue and not too long down the road. It's just some of those types of things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
No, thank you. And I have enough meetings, I'm not going to stay for yours. Thank you for excusing me.
Dave, did you bring any brochures to pass out?
I'm sorry.
Did you bring any brochures to pass out?
You mean besides?
For the general audience.
I did not.
Okay.
I did not.
They're at the senior.
That I can get some to put in.
They're at the community center.
I can get, they are at the community center, but I can get some to put in your lobby if you would like.
That would be great.
I'll get some to Greg.
Okay.
Okay, thanks again.
Thanks, Mr. Nyman. Okay. Moving forward, next on the agenda is committee reports. Planning Commission first, Mr. Durstein.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What's that? A quick turnaround, yeah. Meeting, we met last night. We met last night, we had four items on the agenda. First was a sewage facilities planning module for the Grifo project, which was down Carolyn Hill and Township Road. You might remember, it's just a two-lot subdivision, an approved subdivision. The original home is connected to the Sellersville system at the top of the hill there, Carolyn. And the new home is hoping to connect as well. DEP needs comment from Planning Commission to assure compliance with the ordinance. And Steve, if you have anything to add to that, feel free to jump in when you seem fit. Honestly, it was a pretty quick and easy thing. We agreed to authorize the chairman, me, to sign a form with no additional commas from what Steve had already. Any questions on that?
I have none.
Okay. Second item, second item was not quite as simple. We had an informal sketch and presentation by an outfit called National Land Developers. They are considering building a data center at the 215 Cat Hill Road property, which was the original property between Teva and 309 that Durstein Foods was looking to put their cold storage warehouse. Where am I at here? There was a lengthy presentation, a lot of discussion about the use with a fair amount of public questioning. As mentioned, this was an informal sketch, kind of a meet and greet, show us what they would like to do, go over potential layout, describe the project, and receive input from the Planning Commission and the public. We had a lot of public input. A couple of takeaways, they would have minimum truck and car traffic, actually. Small employee force, they'd be operating three shifts, but the best I could discern it was 18 employees per shift. The, they would be hoping to get public sewer through the sleeve that goes through the, underneath the East Branch, up into Telford system. There was some discussion about wells and water. I don't know, is there a possibility they could get public water there? It seemed.
Come down to Teva, someone comes into Teva there, doesn't it?
Yeah. The possibility is the same route as the sewer. As a sewer, yeah. That's, but there was a lot of discussion about wells and well use and discharging the aquifer. Right. Well, there is, I mean, there's a, there's a separate sleeve, or it might be the same sleeve, but there's room for another horse mane.
There were wells dug in that area, weren't there at one time?
Yeah, we had some discussion about that last night, and I think we figured out it was for when Teva was looking to expand.
For the record, let's not use Teva.
I know, I'm sorry, I forget what the name is.
That is not the Teva property anymore.
I don't remember the name of the name.
Just for the record.
All right, Lemon.
Way back, yeah.
What is the new name of it?
I think it's. Yeah.
Okay, Teva. I can't pronounce that. Anyway, thank you.
Yep.
That's where we're at. Wells, yeah, so wells were a big concern for, you know, draining the aquifer in the area. So hopefully, if this was to go through, they would be able to get public water. Their biggest water use is cooling. They have, the primary contents of this warehouse would be servers. And apparently, they generate a lot of heat, so they would have a closed-loop system, but that would be basically a water closed system that the water would be fan-cooled. So the initial filling of the cooling system would be a big, a big water use, but after that, the water use would definitely drop. And I'm going way too far into this for the amount of time that they spent here. Considering two buildings on the site, anywhere from what I remember, 100,000, 150,000 square feet apiece. They, they did make comment that, you know, they plan on putting something on this property, something that falls within zoning. They seem to think that this was probably the least impactful for the area. The area that it's in works out well for them with the region that they want to be in and the actual power that's available to. Then they'd be doing a straight tap right off the lines that are going through the property. I mean, it was a long presentation. I would suggest that you watch the presentation on the video, because there's a lot of information that I didn't touch on tonight. But anyway, like I said, it was an informal sketch. They were just in for input, introduced themselves, and we sent them on their way. So do you have any questions or comments on that?
I don't have any at this moment.
Okay.
One question is, is the old Finnberg house still there in the back? Asking about that for these folks in society.
Somebody had asked about a structure on the property last night, but I wasn't aware.
It was Finnberg's back in the 80s. As a member, I was. And I had a long drive, the entire thing was covered in honey like this. Couldn't get out of the car to blow the tires on the tractor.
I'm not sure about the property, the structure on the property.
There's an old farmhouse in the back, and that's been nice because it looked to be about the same style as the Heritage House. So there's stuff that's just going to end up in a dumpster anyway, maybe some of the lanes go in the squashes.
Right. Dave, you have anything?
I have a question. Chris, do you know anything about this National Land Developers?
No. Apparently, I don't know if they.
What kind of track record do they have?
Pardon me?
Do we know what kind of track record they have?
I don't. I know they're national. I don't think they're in every state. I think they're more eastern. I do believe they bought the property. Is that accurate, they bought the property?
They might have it under.
Okay. See what happens.
Thank you.
All right. So a third item we had was another DEP Sewer Facilities Planning Module form. This was Select Properties Project, the 109 Augustine Road project. On these, on these forms, we have, the Planning Commission has the opportunity to add comment for DEP to look at and consider. Steve had made a lot of comments on the, on the review. You know, as you know, they're in a Telford, the Telford area number two, the servicing area number two, which they can't tap into until service area one is fulfilled. There's no agreement with Telford and Sellersville as of yet. There's no, there's been no. Running out of words to say here. An increased flow. There's been no evaluation on increased flow to Sellersville from the project. So we are adding all these comments as well as concerns with wells in the area. The proposed project is looking to do installment, I think, eight wells. I think there's one existing on a nine-house project. So there was, there was concerns about the wells at the last meeting that selected had been in, and we felt it necessary to include that on the comments that DEP. So all these will be added to the, to the form, and Planning Commission agreed to authorize me to sign that form once these additions are made. And Steve, if you have anything to add to that. Okay. All right, so that was the third item. Do you have any questions on it?
I don't.
David, you're good.
I assume you had a pretty good turnout then last night for this.
We had a pretty good turnout, yeah. It's SRO.
That's good.
It was awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our last item was yet another DEP Sewer Facility Plan Module Form for the Ridge and Lawn Project. That would be the one on the, what would that be, the east side of lawn? Yeah, east side of lawn, south side of Ridge. Same deal. They, they have to do the sewer through the service area too. The only difference is they would be looking for public water. So we decided to do the same comments as we did on the Augustine Road without the water comments. So Planning Commission authorized the chairman to sign that once it's drafted. And that was that project, and that was all we had.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions for Chris, other than what we had already discussed? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval for Chris's report as presented.
So moved.
Motion is made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Durstein.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, next on, moving forward, next on the agenda is parking rec. Mr. Dave Rice, how are you, Mr. Rice?
All right, everybody, how's everybody doing? How many people were at September Fest? Come on, you gotta raise your hand. How many were there? Was it awesome or was it not awesome? It was awesome. All right, so that was cool. I'm guessing, I don't know, by talking to Seth and stuff like that, we haven't had a turnout like that. This was the 30th annual September Fest. We haven't had a turnout like that in probably six, seven, eight years. They were parked out past the stone parking lot out in the field, and we just had a great day. It was, I think it touched 80 degrees. It was beautiful. I can't thank enough the, my fellow parking rec members, the junior members, the family members of the parking rec, the township staff, the sponsors, the entertainment. I mean, we had the police department there, we had the fire department there, we had emergency medical services. Everybody that was there, if I missed somebody, I'm sorry. Entertainment? Yeah, I think I missed that. Everybody that was there had a great day. We had dedication of the new gazebo. I think Abby had a great day, knowing that her years of service, her decades of service to the community were appreciated. I mean, she got to take a ride in the convertible. It happened to be her son-in-law's, but it was a convertible ride around the park up until where she was dropped off at the. Yeah, well, I was going to say the approach to the gazebo, but as she walked up there, I mean, it was just awesome. So I mean, she could experience and just enjoy that ride. I think it was awesome. So it was just, I mean, you can tell, it was pretty cool, I thought. So if you, if you weren't there, you missed a great day, but well, there's next year, we'll still have it. All right, so now I got to come back down. So next one, future home and fire, Saturday night, if you're not doing anything, bring a blanket and a chair. We're going to have Home Alone. If you don't know Home Alone, Callie McCallkin, it's the original. So we're going to have a great night. It's going to be a little chilly, so bring a blanket, chair. We're going to have some popcorn, some hot chocolate. We're going to have a good night. Weather looks good. Say my prayers every day, so we have a good night. So make sure you come out, it starts at dusk, so about 7:00, about 7 o'clock, something like that. So always setting up before that, if you want to come out and give a hand or whatnot, I'll be there, we'll be there. Show up, just have a good time, you'll be there. And then we also have December 14th, we're talking about having pitchers with Santa at the gazebo. How else better to use the gazebo than to have pitchers with Santa? December 14th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., hot chocolate, candy canes, pitchers, and Santa Claus will arrive. I'm not sure if I sleigh with reindeer or some other method. I'm not quite sure yet, I don't have the details on that. But that's what we're looking at. Hopefully, weather is good, knock on wood. And then fourth thing, Dog Expansion Park. So we're starting to move on to Dog Expansion Park. So we're moving to have a second, well, actually, an additional dog park created with a meet and greet area, 10 by 10 meet and greet area. It's 120 by 54. And then once that's created, it's going to be elevated, so we have good water runoff, so it's not going to be a mess like the, well, the existing one. And then we can close down that one, and then possibly next year work. Um, and then we can close down that one and then possibly next year work on the second side, which was, you know, the original one. So that's the, that's the plan and that's what we got going on. We got a lot of cool stuff. It's fun.
Doing good work, doing good work.
The committee's doing good work.
Yep.
We all do great. I couldn't do it without them.
We all couldn't do it without them.
Absolutely.
Volunteers or our township.
Absolutely.
And the, and the residents. Okay. Any questions for Dave other than that? Okay. Entertained a motion for approval? Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep. Okay, moving forward, next on the agenda is the Conservation Committee report.
Good evening. Uh, our Conservation Committee meeting was held on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and most of the meeting was just planning for the, um, September Fest, which is on Sunday, September twenty-eighth. We just heard about that. And we set up a booth at this year's September Fest. Uh, we had a large township map, which you can see over on the left, shows all the, um, preserved properties. And we also provided copies of our brochures and we have reusable tote bags, which were available for donation. I think, um, it was a nice day. Uh, we had a good steady stream of people going by. The Conservation Committee, our main purpose of showing up at these is just to give, uh, township residents a chance to see what we do and to answer questions and I think a lot of people stopped, watched our map for a while and then moved on. We did have a number of questions. So it was pretty much a a good way to introduce ourselves to the township, you know, more public or at one of the more public events. And that was it for our meeting. Um, our next meeting is held on the third Thursday of odd numbered months at five o'clock. And the next meeting is November twentieth. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Chairman?
I have none.
Okay. Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, all those signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. All right, next on the agenda, uh, Commission reports, Penridge Regional Police. Chief Dickinson, how are you?
All right, we're gonna try this again. Uh, the September twenty twenty-five activity report for the Penridge Regional Police Department. Police Department responded to seven hundred and forty-nine calls for service in the month of September. Three hundred and thirty-nine of those calls were in East Rock Hill Township, three hundred and ninety-seven were here in West Rock Hill Township, and thirteen calls were assisting our neighboring agencies. The police department responded to and investigated twenty-four traffic crashes. Of those traffic crashes, fifteen of them were were reportable and seven of them were non-reportable, with seven occurring in East Rock Hill Township and fifteen occurring in West Rock Hill Township. A criminal activity for the month of September included nine crimes against property, two crimes against persons, four crimes against society, and then four group B offenses, which are, I'm sorry, sixteen group B offenses, which are your more minor, minor offenses. Of those reported crimes, the crimes reported in East Rock Hill Township included, uh, one DUI accident, one burglary, one disorderly conduct, a DUI, two reports of fraud, a report of harassment, an ordinance violation, and a theft report. Here in West Rock Hill Township, we responded to one hit and one crash, three DUI accidents, um, one report of child abuse, sexual, sexual offense, one criminal mischief, a report of a domestic assault, one drug complaint, two, two reports of frauds, three reports of harassment, three violations of our local ordinances here in West Rock Hill Township, and four theft reports. Criminal charges filed in the month of September included two charges of harassment, nineteen charges of DUI, four charges of drug possession, three charges of possession of drug paraphernalia, uh, three thefts of movable, movable property. One person was charged with burglary, criminal trespass, and criminal mischief. One charge of false statements to purchase a firearm and one statement of, um, also a false sta, a false statement under, um, law with purchasing a firearm. Our other police activity reports for the month of September included one hundred and seventy-five traffic enforcement details. We issued eighty-eight traffic citations, sixty-one traffic warnings, twenty-six school checks were conducted, a hundred and fourteen school, uh, park checks were conducted, fifty-seven business checks, and officers attended or participated in two hundred and fifty-three hours of training in September. So far for twenty twenty-five, the police department has handled seven thousand two hundred and fifty-six calls for service, uh, responded to and investigated two hundred and forty-seven traffic accidents, two hundred and thirty-nine report, reported offenses, filed two hundred and seventy criminal charges, and officers have attended or participated in one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three hours of training. And that would be your September twenty twenty-five activity report for the police department.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have any questions for the Chief?
Just to comment, criminal charges, nineteen DUI, simpai.
Oh, yes. Um, so that's, so the DUI is, DUI law is very unique now. It's changed over in the, in the last decade or so. I should probably longer than that, but it's changed so that the way that they charge DUI, it has many different tiers. And if you fall within those tiers based on what is found in your system at the time of your arrest, it can be, you could have one DUI, but it'd be multiple charges. So one DUI incident, but multiple charges to that DUI. So. So yes, it's very high, but we've, we've had, we, we've kind of seen, I've seen a little bit of an increase in our, in our DUI crashes and also some of our enforcement has increased, so.
Okay. Any other questions concerned? Okay, um, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Yep, motions are made. Second, all those signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a great night. Okay, moving forward, next on the agenda is the Joint Recreational Authority, Angela Goodwin. Hello, Angela. Going good, thanks.
All right, as you know, not much going over, going on in the pool right now, but, um, our meeting this past month, we probably discussed about getting a slide. Um, it was recommended by Aquatic Designs that, um, putting a slide well might help with some membership over at the pool. Um, they are also, we tabled that this past month, hoping that they will give us some more names of slide companies and maybe we can reach out for a used one or something that might help with the cost of that as well. Um, the calendar, we're gonna, Shelley's gonna be taking care of and updating the calendar. We're gonna start looking at activities and try to get them done as early as possible. Um, excuse me, now for next year. Um, the membership pricings, uh, we voted on and passed. We're going to be increasing the membership prices fifteen percent, um, as of March thirty-first. So we're gonna give this year's prices up until March thirty-first. We're gonna try to start selling passes that maybe people can buy their tickets for Christmas as Christmas gifts or something. We're gonna start that this year. So we're gonna try to do that. Um, volunteers and board members, uh, we're still looking for two Sellersville board members. Um, we put it out there. I had, did have somebody respond back last month. Unfortunately, they did not show up to the meeting, um, and we had somebody else that has responded as well on Facebook. Hopefully they will attend this coming meeting. Um, Shelley's also looking for some board members to come out to, excuse me, some volunteers to come out to the polls to help do some fundraising, restart fundraising for the slide. So we can get some funds for the slide. Um, we have a few items that are gonna be needed for next year, uh, that we're gonna have to look at purchasing, which includes a diving board, one ladder, two umbrellas, um, a new flag. That one's pretty tattered. Um, two rescue tubes, a new chalkboard, zip line rope, some, and speakers, our speakers are wearing out, and battery for the tractor. Um, pool painting, we're gonna have to start looking at getting some bids for, to paint the pool. Uh, we had the blue striping done for the lap lines around the top done this past year, but, um, the white needs to be painted in the bottom of the pool and the sides. Um, also for lawn service, um, we're gonna try to get some bids for lawn service. I'm not sure if we can, if anybody's gonna be able to outbid the person that we have, but we'd like to maybe see what we can do there. Get some lower prices for lawn service. Um, the committees, I kinda wanted to assign people to certain committees to head certain things. Um, especially since I work full-time, this has been a little bit difficult for me. So, um, I have, you know, assigned different peop, different positions to people on the board to take care of things as well as, um, our volunteers. Um, so this way, everybody knows if they have any questions on who to reach out to. Um, Shelley's, I'm gonna be taking care of the agendas, the reports, of course, and the maintenance of the pole. Shelley's gonna be doing the slides, um, that she's gonna be working the poles, um, the rec desk and the calendar. Excuse me, it's the slide, the, yeah. Um, Hal's taking care of all the emails, the phone system and the cameras for us. And Tony's gonna be ordering anything that we need to lifeguards as well as doing the upkeep of the outside of the building as far as it goes to flower beds and the plants. Um, Don is running the feasibility study for us. Paul is doing our, taking care of Grant Works and Roseanne with the fundraising, the face, and taking care of Facebook for us. Um, as far as fundraising at this time, Roseanne, um, she's working on setting up a table at, uh, Percocci's Tree Lighting in December as well as the Celtic Fest. Um, we do have, we also had, which I had in last month's report about in December, we have, um, the dine and donate at the perk. So, um, feasibility study, uh, we had four plans submitted to us. We did pick one of them plans, which I have a copy of them. If it's okay, I can give it to you. Um, as well as an end of year report that Don did for us too, in regards to, if I'm okay to give that to you.
Yep, thank you very much.
And that was really, that was about it. And I, I do wanna say thank you to everybody who's helped with the pool this past year. I mean, this pool cannot run or operate without the community support. And any help we get is a big bonus, especially for people like myself that works full-time and to assign jobs to everybody is, is really important to me as well as everybody else. So and with more housing, it sounds like coming in, maybe we'll have a higher membership. So.
Okay, any, any questions for Angel?
Are you, are you still looking to hire someone? You, you talked a couple of months ago about hiring someone to, like a full-time?
To manage the pole, yes.
Year-round, you're still looking at that.
I wanna try to do, work some numbers and see if we can change it up, maybe a little bit on having like an admin person or something like that at the front desk instead of having lifeguards do that. From my understanding, they did that before. Maybe that'll help with some of the cost, but, um, the YMCA that's been using the pole, that used the pole over this past summer, said they'd like to work with us and maybe get, um, a manager to help run the pole as well.
Okay.
That would be a big help.
Yep.
So.
All right, very good.
Any other questions?
And we're also always looking for somebody to run this next game.
Yes, must definitely. Thanks, Hal.
Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the report as presented. Motion's been made?
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving forward, tax collector's report. Suzanne is not here, I don't see, right? Would you read that for me, Greg?
Sure, uh, in your packet is the tax collectors' report for the month of September, uh, collected four hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-six cents.
Any questions for Greg?
Short and sweet, thank you, no.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Oh, motion's made? Second, all those signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Moving forward, engineers report, Mr. Bowles.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have no items on the, under my agenda unless you have any questions.
I do not. Any questions?
Possibly later in the agenda.
Certainly.
All right. All right, no action required. Moving forward, solicitors report, Mr. Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item on my portion of the agenda for tonight is to introduce an ordinance that would authorize the Penridge Regional Police Department officers to make warrantless arrests for certain summary offenses and further to consider a resolution which would schedule the public hearing on the adoption of that ordinance for your next meeting, Wednesday, November nineteenth of, at seven P M here in this room. Um, just, you're not here to have the hearing tonight, of course, or to consider adopting it tonight, but I think it would be helpful to put into context for the public. Um, in Pennsylvania, there are grades of offenses. You have summary offenses of the least serious. Up from there is misdemeanors and up from there is felonies. Uh, typically, the rule in Pennsylvania is that police are not allowed to arrest persons for probable cause for a summary offense because they're not serious enough to justify an arrest typically. Uh, but state law provides municipalities with the option to pass an ordinance that would allow the arrests for certain enumerated summary offenses, and specifically it's, uh, disorderly conduct, public drunkenness, which includes being on drugs in public. It's not just alcohol. Uh, there's an obstruction of highways, so people blocking roadways with no justification, and underage drinking. Those are the four offenses that state law allows a municipality to pass an ordinance to make arrests for. Um, and if the, uh, municipality does pass such an ordinance, the police officers are then allowed to make those arrests. And why is that a good thing? Um, typically, it's somebody committing those offenses if they're imperiling personal security of themselves or somebody else, or they're presenting a danger to persons or property. Uh, the police should be able to do something about that in, in theory. They should be able to put an end to that, at least for the person's own well-being, but also for everybody else's well-being. But another benefit potentially of an ordinance like this is that it legitimizes an arrest. If you have probable cause to believe somebody's just committing something as minor as public drunkenness, place them under arrest, you get to search that person pursuant to that arrest. What if they have an illegal firearm or a lot of drugs that they were about to go sell? You are now allowed to use that evidence for the more serious case, the felony for the firearms or for the drugs. Um, so it's the fruit of the poisonous tree doctrine. You may have heard of that before. Um, it basically makes all that fruit non-poisonous. So, um, we'll talk more about it next month at the, uh, at the next meeting, but generally that is what is before you for next month. Uh, but to consider adopting a resolution tonight to schedule that for next month's meeting and to authorize me to advertise that for next meeting.
Okay.
So I have a resolution for your consideration for the board. At this point, we would just need a motion to, um, set the public hearing for next month on the ordinance and allow me to authorize, uh, or to, uh, advertise.
Okay, any thoughts from my fellows?
I would assume that East Rock Hill's going down the same path.
Exactly, yes. The chief, um, kinda brought us all together and East Rock Hill, I think, has a very similar, almost identical ordinance on their agenda for their late November meeting. So they'll be considered around the same time for uniformity for the department.
Okay, so are you making that motion? Move forward with that?
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made?
I will second it.
Second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
I have the resolution for your signature, Mr. Patrick.
Got it.
Resolution number?
Uh, twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
Thank you.
I'm moving to my second, uh, item on the agenda tonight. Um, worth mentioning a little bit of the history. Last month's, at last month's meeting, we heard from, uh, Timothy Snyder and I think he had an engineer, an architect here with him, uh, but they presented a plan under land development number five oh five for conditional preliminary final plan approval, um, for some, uh, properties that are off of, um, Camp Rock Hill Road. Uh, there were, um, some review comments issued by our engineer and, um, pursuant to the discussion at last month's meeting, we drafted an approval resolution with certain conditions. Uh, we forwarded that to, uh, Mr. Snyder through counsel, um, and I wanna speak through counsel, but I understand that there may be, um, not prepared to accept all the conditions tonight. There may be further discussion warranted. Um, I don't know if, wanted to address anything tonight or if the board would have questions for you, but um, several options are before you tonight. You can either approve the resolution as it's presented, you can deny it, or you can table it until next month because we have until, I believe, December eighteenth for action based on the, um, the waiver of deadlines that was recently rescinded. Um, I note that John Van Louvene is here as counsel for the applicant, Mr. Snyder. Um, I'll defer to the board, though. Do you wanna hear from the applicant first to make?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Bellamy, go ahead.
Well, whether, whether you need to hear from me, uh, may depend on whether you've already seen the letter that I sent to Mr. Healy, uh, yesterday. Uh, there were all right, the big, the major, the major issue, of course, is the shared driveway issue. And I wasn't here last month, but I did watch the video online, so I understand the discussion and it looked to me as if we got to the point where that was the issue. And you asked Mr. Snyder to think about it. He said he wanted to read the resolution and he did. He asked me to advise him whether or not he had a legal right to maintain his position, that he preferred the shared driveways to the individual driveways. And I summarized my research in the letter that I wrote to Mr. Keely. It's clear to me that although his plan was pending when you adopted the ordinance by codification, the one that eliminates the shared driveways, uh, his plan had been filed previously. I sent Mr. Keely a copy of the case that was decided by the Commonwealth Court two years ago, uh, the Jandal Land Company case. years ago, uh, the Jandal Land Company case, that very clearly after a discussion of all of the case laws that has come before, including the cases back as far as monumental properties, which was decided back in the seventies. The law is clear, whether, and most municipalities I know don't care for this, but when a preliminary subdivision plan is filed prior to the adoption, not even the advertisement, prior to the date of the adoption of the ordinance, the property owner's entitled to a decision under the ordinance as it existed on the date of filing. That's what the law is and, uh, Mr. Snyder, after discussion with me, had indicated to me that based on that, he was going to stick with his plan, uh, rather than agree to modify the plan to provide individual driveways, which would in turn require him to go back and apply for amendments to the NPDS permit, because I think it was Steve calculated approximately one half acre of additional driveway pavement would be required if these driveways were, he added the individual driveways. I know Mr. Snyder is aware that some people don't like shared driveways, there are other people who do like them. Uh, obviously, any buyer who considers buying one of these is going to be aware that there's this shared driveway. And, uh, if nobody wants to buy a shared driveway, Mr. Snyder's left with his plan. But there are people, I know some people who prefer them and like it better, like to have the idea of split maintenance. I also have clients who have had problems through the years, but again, I don't see that, uh, the ordinance is clear. Seems to me Mr. Snyder's come through a lot of hoops to get the plan to this point over the number of years. I actually started with Tim almost twenty years ago, I guess, when he did his first development. And, uh, I think where he'd like, we'd like to have a decision made tonight. I think the issues have all been, uh, addressed. Uh, what I said in there is condition number one of the resolution. We were satisfied with the comments in Steve's review letter, uh, because of the statement at the end of condition number one that said unless otherwise modified herein, as far as we were concerned, that eliminated some of the ambiguities that we had. So, that condition, compliance with Steve's September ten letter, uh, unless otherwise modified, is acceptable. Condition number two, uh, in my view, would become moot if we don't accept the condition with regard to shared driveways. Shared driveways is not, is not acceptable, so because condition number two is not acceptable, condition number three was, would not be applicable and would be stricken. Condition fourteen, uh, should be revised, although there is a six lot subdivision, only five new houses, new, new dwellings proposed in your ordinance says the fee in lieu would be based on new dwelling units, as I read it, not the number of lots in the subdivision. And for that reason, I think the fee in lieu in condition fourteen should be five thousand rather than six thousand. All of the other conditions were acceptable and are acceptable, as set forth in the resolution. And then I spent, uh, approximately a page explaining the, the law in case someone was interested in reading it. Most people are not, I realize.
Uh, is there any comments or concerns from my fellow board members?
Uh, we haven't seen the letter.
No.
We've, we've heard, we've gotten a verbal, we haven't really had a chance to digest fine print.
Since it was only submitted twenty-three hours ago, or a day ago, correct? Is there, were we up against any timeframe if we were to table this till next month?
Not until December eighteenth, I think.
Okay.
So I calculated.
And we, so we're okay if we were to table?
It would not be a deemed approval if we tabled it until next month.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna recommend, me personally, I'm gonna recommend that we table this till next month?
I agree with that.
And then that way we'll be able to digest the letter that you sent to him?
I can't force you to make a decision, I realize that.
Right, and, and that's why I'm saying, I'm recommending, me personally, I'm recommending that we table it.
It seemed to me that the issues were thoroughly discussed last month and it's pretty clear. If there was only one issue, seems to me that the issue, you know, you each have a personal opinion on that issue, I'm sure, and I'm sure Mr. Keely's already advised you with respect to the legal issue.
I do want to read the letter myself. So, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this till next month?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Solicitor, do you have anything else on your agenda?
That concludes my section of this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Moving forward.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the solicitor's report.
Motion's been made in second. Okay, motion been made in second to approve the solicitor's report as presented. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, moving forward, management report, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is, uh, two twenty-seven Old Mill Road Legal Action. Um, for some time, I've been trying to work with the property owner to clean up the property. It has not progressed as fast as I would like. I'm seeking the board's authorization to, uh, get the township solicitor involved to write a letter, um, to the property owner, um, to help entice him to start cleaning up.
Okay. Any concerns, questions? We've, we've, we've discussed this property numerous times?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, I think it's time to, to move in this direction. I just would think that we had a family member write a letter and I think we have to respect that there's some issues there that we have to be aware of as, as the solicitor moves forward.
Okay. I'm, I'm in agreeance with you regarding, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I also agree that it's time to move forward, but you don't need to go rushing in if there's a chance of getting, uh, complaints.
Okay, are you making that in the form of a motion?
I am.
Okay, motion's been made?
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You may instruct the solicitor to get involved.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the twenty twenty-six budget discussion. Every year in October, I forward the board a draft ordinance. Um, you look at it and then at your November meeting, you authorize advertisement, that's when it becomes a public document. And then from there, um, it's available until the December meeting when you adopt it. Um, this year's budget, um, has won a couple of issues. First, uh, the joint rec authority's still at thirteen thousand, Penridge Senior Center's still at twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the big change is the police services. The proposed budget for next year is one million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one. But I kind of want to go over some of the history. The general fund revenue from two thousand seventeen grew from two point three to three million dollars. It represents about a three point eight percent annual increase. During that same time, the police grew about at four point two percent over that same period. From two thousand twenty-four, the police budget increased from a hundred, one point two million to one point three million and change, it's a six point seven increase, which is, uh, significantly higher than the three point eight. Next year's budget goes up to one point five million, uh, which represents a seventeen percent increase from the twenty twenty-five. Uh, long-range projections, one of some of that the, uh, chief did is he went out and did a twenty thirty projection for the police budget, which would go up to two million dollars, twenty-one thousand. That's going to average out to be a eight point six six increase over annually, over each year from the twenty twenty-five budget. Uh, the impact that it's going to have in twenty twenty-three, the police department was forty percent of the township general fund, um, which left in the general fund one point seven eight for all other operating expenses for the township, which we pave our roads, um, take care of the parks and whatnot. By the end of twenty thirty, uh, the township, uh, will be approximately, uh, let me check my notes, fifty-six percent, uh, of the general fund, um, leaving the remaining amount for services down to one point five six. This number is not adjusted for inflation. Slide. What that looks like is up there, in twenty twenty-five, we had one point seven million dollars for the general fund, in twenty twenty-six, it'll go down to one point five, twenty twenty-seven, it'll go down to one point four million. And then it slowly starts to go back up, but even at twenty thirty, we're about two hundred thousand dollars less than we were in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
So, we'll be operating with, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. Want to go to the next one? One of the things that is important for everyone to realize, every month I read the, uh, balance of the general fund and it's up to two point six million dollars. Um, after we pay the bills, this month, um, we pay our paving for twenty twenty-five and our paving for twenty twenty-four. If the township remembers in twenty twenty-four, a paving contractor did not pave, they pushed it everything back to twenty twenty-five. By the time we're done paying all our bills, um, the general fund will go down to one point. The board does not have to take any action, this is just making the community and the board aware for next month's discussion when it becomes.
I think you did a pretty good job of explaining that. Any questions from fellow board members or concerns right now at this moment?
Yeah, I have, the, the slide that has financial projections, twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty, that one. I think if you look at that from twenty-six to thirty, the percentage of the budget for the police department jumps fifty, over fifty percent every, every year.
Correct.
And I think that's, that, that's a concern, I think, to, almost to a person. The citizens of West Rock Hill want a local police force and they're willing to pay for it. They don't want to wait twenty-five minutes for the state police to show up. But I just, I, I say this because I think that there's, there'll be pain in twenty-six, but there's gonna be a major pain five years from now and we just can't kick the can down the road and then all of a sudden have a huge increase to take care of things in four or five years, that we have to think about what we have to do now. And it may be an occasional or incremental increase in taxes. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that, that might be the case. My thoughts.
Okay. Well, as I explained last month, the, uh, if you calculate the partnerships in the, in the police, East Rock Hill and West Rock Hill, there, there's been a thirty percent increase in the past two years in the police budget. I'm not saying, this is, this is the reality of costs, this is what things cost. People have to understand that, the rise in insurance and everything that goes along with that. So, we have to be prepared for that. We do have some decisions to make till next month, but I am happy that staff has done a really good job of explaining and showing what, where we're at here. We have eaten three, four percent increases over numerous years, as you, as you have seen, even the six percent, six and a half percent last year, but you can't continue to eat seventeen and a half percent increase. That's, that's a lot of money. And we have done a real good job with our roads, spending four, five, six hundred thousand dollars on paving roads, I believe. Um, we've been very mindful of how we have spent money in this township. And with that being said, we all know it's important to have a good police department. Chief has done a really good job with that, so I do commend him on his work. We don't always agree on what we get, but you have done a great job. Thank you. That's my thoughts. Next month, we will have to make a serious decision on what we do moving forward for the future. That being said, any other comment?
No, unfortunately, things continue to get more expensive, so you have to deal with it.
Okay.
We have to think about how you're gonna deal with it before you get to it.
Yeah.
So.
All right. Moving on there, Mr. Manager?
Uh, the next item is we have a letter from Telford Borough Authority. I do not think anyone from Telford Borough Authority is here.
They were asked to come, right?
Uh, they were asked to come, they sent this letter. Uh, it was my understanding that no one could be able to make it, but I wanted to give them the opportunity to do it. Uh, you have a letter in your, in your packet, they're asking for the Haven, uh, Circle Drive Valley Road in Haven Lane, um, to be oiled and chipped instead of overlaid. To save the property owner's additional cost, the oil and chip is approximately fifty one thousand dollars, where the overlay paving is approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. PBA is worried about assessing these costs to the property owners.
Okay, for the public's information, would you please go through the process of, of how we got to where we are right now with this particular situation of the roads being cut and them wanting to tar and chip this apartment?
Well, absolutely. Um, the board of supervisors, um, when Telford Borough Authority came here and asked to do this project, uh, the board of supervisors asked them to come back with a final number before they awarded the bid. Telford Borough Authority did not come back to the West Rock Hill Board of Supervisors and get the board's approval with that final cost. They awarded the bid, um, without the board's approval. Second of all, they assured the township that they could do directional boring in West Rock Hill Township underneath the roads, um, which as they went out there, they ended up hitting rock and could not do directional bore. Um, so they had to cut ups all up the road and do trench work. Under our resolution, whenever somebody, uh, does work on our roads, they have to do an overlay. Um, they requested oil and chip, they do not have the authorization to do oil and chip and so they have to. And that's how we got here tonight.
Nice explanation, thank you. I personally was very disappointed in the, in the process of this because number one, they didn't come back with a real number. And then number two, when they did start it, the, uh, the boring was gonna take place. And we all know, living in West Rock Hill Township, we have rocks. And to do a project like this and say you're not gonna damage the roads or dig up the roads, you're gonna bore everything, I've been, I have some experience in construction and I know that that's almost impossible to do. So, the way the township has been communicated with here, I think, has been not so nice. And as a representative of you, the citizens, I would never accept tar and chip. Never. It will be overlay. Now, they have put in their letter that it's gonna raise the cost to the residents. I don't like that either, because I don't think that the, the, the cost should be passed along to the residents. That's on them, because they said they could bore it. So, whatever the additional cost is, they should be eating. Remind, be, be mindful of something. When they get you as a customer, they have you, they have that home as a customer for life. They will be getting water and sewer bills sent to your house for life. And not only your life, for every, everybody that buys that house down the road. So, the way this was handled, my opinion is, we don't accept tar and chip, we force them to do an overlay, real paving, and we, and we, we encourage them not to pass that cost along to the residents. That's my point of view. Now, whether that happens or not, we're gonna find out. Any other comments from fellow board members?
I, 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 I read the letter and I'm, I look at it and it's almost like a bait and switch. They said they were gonna do A and they now can't do it. And now they want to go to a Plan B and they want to pass the cost on to the residents. And I think we have to hold them accountable to our standards of what we expect the road to look like when they're finished. And we also have to stand for the residents of, uh... Yeah, Circle Drive. Circle Drive.
And, and the other roads identified. I guess you probably, should we make a motion on this to make sure that, uh, they understand that we're not accepting tar and chip?
You should, you should make a motion to direct the township manager, we're considering to write a letter back to Telford Borough Authority.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah. I will make a motion to that effect.
I will second.
Motion's been made in second? All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? I just have it.
Is it up to the manager and the solicitor to decide who sends the letter?
It is. Can I, can I, can I say one thing?
Yes.
He works for us, okay? You get your direction from him, please.
Good.
Okay?
He works for us as well.
He does. You, you two guys are working out, right?
Sure.
Thank you very much. You have anything else on that, on there, Mr. Manager?
I have no other.
I have no other items.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the manager's report as presented?
So made.
Second.
Motion's made in second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, any old business? Hmm.
The only old business that I have is going back to the budget and since we had dropped down to thirteen thousand... And since we had dropped down to thirteen thousand for Holiday House, see you considering bringing that back up to the fifteen. Because we had initially got that from paying off the initial construction, which was fifteen thousand dollars a year. Then after thirty years, hooray, it's now free, owned free and clear. But some mortgage payment was set. We never upped it. But it would basically be a lot. The amount that you're actually spending now proportionally is way lower than what we had for the thirty years when it was first constructed. And just maintenance, the same thing with, hooray, you now have the house paid off after thirty years. It's like, well, hopefully nothing breaks, because there's always going to be maintenance. There's always going to be increases.
I will take that, I will take that as a duly noted and under advisement. Comment, Mr. Callie, with any comments? On old business?
Yeah, there is one. I've noticed an, an increase in activity of like motorbikes in the park.
In the park?
And I'm just wondering, they're driving into the park and they're actually on the trail, driving around where people are walking their dogs and people are exercising. And I'm not, I don't know if we, we don't have any signs posted over there that prohibit that, but I think we should think about it.
Are you talking about the e-bikes? Or are they?
Trigger gas powered. It looks like, I think this is gas powered, the one I saw a couple of times, small one.
Yeah, because that's already, no motorized vehicles are allowed on.
There's signage for that over there?
Pretty sure it's on the rules. It's on the rules, we could add some more.
Your sign, I, I see it happening and I'm just wondering. That, that was my.
We will address it.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
Greg?
And that would just be, that would only be a municipal violation, right?
That would be, that would be an ordinance violation.
Ordinance violation. They evolve for that.
Yeah, dude.
Nor any of the park rules, or it's an ordinance?
Yes, we're thinking about enforcement. Of course, they're going to get away, but it doesn't hurt to try.
No, just like it's inconvenienced, so the people are actually trying to use the park for which it's intended, have someone.
I agree.
Driving around with a motorbike.
I know, that's a big, and I know that's a big problem for Piracy Borough and Selsel Borough with Lenape Park and Menzo Park.
Yeah. One of the things that I will share with you, I haven't seen it over here, but we all, you, you can't hear them coming. They come up so fast, especially these e-bikes. I, I saw a guy riding a scooter on a road with no sides, no, no sidewalks or curbs on, on our back road. Just flying and going the wrong way. Anyway, we all, we all have seen this kind of behavior. Any, any new business? Nothing, okay. Nothing. All right, I'll open it up for public comment. If you have public comment, please move forward here and state your name, address.
Yes, you may. Okay, I, I'm a very shy person. I usually don't get up here.
No worries.
This is odd for me, but I want you to.
Name, please?
Oh, Brenda Snyder. I'm Tim Snyder's wife for Butter Creek Poultry. I want you guys to reconsider tonight, because I hear that you guys are looking to get more revenue for the township. And the best way to do that is to have more housing. If you keep not allowing the builders, I mean, mind you, this subdivision is like seven, eight years going on. And it's a minor issue for you to push it off another month. Is, to me, is ridiculous over, you know, you're going to pass it. I mean, come on, wait another month. I've been waiting seven years. And before that, it's been like twenty eight years. I had my first baby and we came to the board meetings and all. And you know what? We put that aside and decided we're going to put a house there ourselves and forgot about it. But then, I, I forget who it was, what was her name? But anyway, so the thing is, life changes. We just want to build a house there and start, I mean, my kids are twenty eight, twenty six and twenty four. I mean, come on now, I just, I can't believe on this issue that you would just keep pushing it and pushing it and waiting for what? I mean, I, I just beg you to reconsider. I mean, it's not harming anybody. It's going to get us moving in the right direction. It's just to me, I don't know about you guys, but my goodness. I mean, you want, you want money, but you don't let a few builders do. And he's not even a big builder, he's a small builder. I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, I don't know if anybody else wants to comment, because I'm tired. I'm getting gray. You know what I mean? And all we want to do is put a house there. It's ridiculous.
Do thank you for your comments.
That's it. You can't open it up and vote again. Why? Can you answer me one question? Just because.
Thank you for your comments.
You can't even say about the driveway issue or anything.
Nope.
May I?
You may.
All, all I could really say is that I'll be in touch with your attorney. I mean, the options for the board tonight, where they either pass a resolution with conditions that were not acceptable or to reject it, which was obviously not the board's intention, or to kick it down for next month, so we can continue to work on a resolution that.
But what is the resolution? I mean, the resident law, I mean, come on now, you're just pushing and waiting and that's sad. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Kathy and I live on Circle Drive.
Okay. Hi Kathy.
So many things to say.
What's your last name, please?
Bamford. I understand that we need to provide public services and utilities for different subdivisions. And I understand the need for growth. I am, I have spoken to Greg in the past and relate to him my concerns about the lack of communication from Telford Borough to the residents regarding this public sewer line that went through. And I took it upon myself to go back and read the engineer reports, so I knew a water line was coming as well. When I spoke to Kyle Detweiler, he didn't know that a water line was coming. And I knew that. And I spoke to some of the residents that we had had meetings with. And I'm really upset. And I need everyone to hear this, because the lack of communication to the residents, when you're trying to provide a service that will be for the good of the community or for the borough, is unacceptable. And for Telford Borough now to write a letter to the township to say, oh, we're probably going to have to charge the residents for resurfacing the, the, the streets that we tore up, that should not be put on the residents. It really should not. And I'm really upset with that. My yard has been tore up time after time after time after time. They come in and they tear it up and they dig multiple holes. And then, next thing you know, they're spreading out straw and they're reseeding it with good intentions. And seven days later, they're back tearing up our yards again, because there's problems. Just this week, they had to tear up the yard again, because they had faulty valves for the water lines. And it was spewing water into, underneath my yard and underneath residents' yards on the top side of Circle Drive. I'm just really concerned about the situation with TBA and their inability to communicate with residents about what's going on and transparency. And I would really like for you guys to hear my words about this and really enforce them to really start communicating and not push that buck to the residents. Because at, at this time, in, in five years ago, the cost to each resident was going to be fifty five thousand dollars to hook up a sewer line. That's crazy.
Two and a half minutes are up.
We do hear your words. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, anybody else with public comment? Hold it back here. Wait in the back here, Mr. Miller.
Oh. I couldn't wait until the end. Bring this up a second. I just want to say a few words about my neighbor. My neighbor passed away after ten, ten days ago. Pat McNulty. Pat was a veteran's veteran. And I think he needs to be recognized. Pat in nineteen sixty seven was wounded twice in Vietnam while trying to rescue his fellow soldiers during an attack. He was hit by mortar, he was hit by a grenade. They took him to the hospital in Japan. A month later, they had him back in Vietnam and he was hit by another grenade. And when, when they took him back to the hospital, the hospital was hit by mortar fire and Pat was hit again. Pat suffered four times and got the, the Silver Star. And somebody like that really needs to be mentioned in a public meeting, because he served the country like many, many people don't. And I just wanted to, to get his name out there and just say thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. White, you're up.
Don't worry. I guess the one thing I would like to see is a, on the budget, is I'd like to see an analysis of how much our growth, we have two large developments going on, large, a big warehouse and a Wawa. I would like to know how much we anticipate we're going to increase in revenue from those two items and anything else we're anticipating. I think that's important to look at with this budget. Uh, sure, surely hoping that we're not forgetting the fire companies. We have to do something about that. We can't continue, we've been going on for, what's it, seventeen years and we have not increased funding to the fire companies? They're as important as the police department and they need to be funded. The only other thing I want to say is, Fred Dugger did all these and I, I gotta tell you, I didn't know until just about a month or so ago that it's dot art. That's all dots. I would love to see a plaque in here describing this art, so that people that come here can read it and realize the, the intensity of what, what he created with this art. That's just for your consideration.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Okay, anybody else with public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Gwen Jordan. I live at Owen Valley Road in the Hidden Valley Development. You were talking about the roads. If they should pave them and not charge us, which would be great and not so great. Because right now, our development is a cut through for that county line, Cat Hill intersection there. People fly through our neighborhood. Paved roads are going to make it ten times worse. There was a stop sign put at the end of Valley Road and Circle Drive. Nobody stops there. They blow it every time. I mean, they slow down. I was wondering if when they do pave, if you could request maybe speed bumps? Or possibly putting in, my neighbors will probably hate it, but more stop signs somehow in the development at certain spots to deter people from flying through there. Because we have a lot of small children coming into that development now. I'm an old lady, I don't have any little kids, I have grandkids. But there's a lot of younger families moving in there now. And I just fear for these kids riding up and down on their bikes and scooters and whatever, that they're going to get hit by somebody. So I don't know what the process is for that. If you guys do that, or if we request it and something's done, I have no idea. But something would be, it would be nice to do something when they repave our roads, if they could do something to control the speed on those roads.
Your comments are duly noted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? With that, don't see any, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment into executive session.
So made.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming and thank you for giving your input. And we will get to work.
Okay.